Hello and welcome to the Channel 17 Town Meeting Coverage. My name is Madeline Clark and I'm a reporter with The Other Paper in South Burlington. I'm joined this evening by Bridget Burkhart and Alex McHenry, the two-year and three-year school board candidates. They are both running unopposed this year. And our program tonight will run about a half an hour. I'll pose a series of questions and we'll also be taking questions from residents at 862-3966. So feel free to call at any point during the program. Candidates will have about two minutes to respond to each question. So I'll start off by asking them to briefly introduce themselves. We'll start with Bridget.
Sure. I am Bridget Burkhart. For those of you who don't know me, I've had two terms so far on the school board. So I'm running for my third term, two-year term. And I'm running because I really believe in public schools as an institution. I think it's a real, public school is a real force for good in the world. And I think it's one of the few institutions that really sort of keep us all together at this time in our society. And I think our public schools, I'm very proud of them in particular. And I'm just excited to keep working to keep them strong and make them better.
Right. And Alex?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Alex McHenry. I'm running for a three-year term. So you see two people on the stage, but we are not running against each other. We're sort of running together, I guess you could say. Anyhow, I'm running because I care about the community. I like helping out in the community. I have two kids in our school system right now. And so I guess you could say I'm pretty heavily invested in our public schools. And I just like helping out with making it as well as it possibly can be.
All right. So I'm going to start off by asking you each, you know, what your top three issues are if you're re-elected that you'll be working on. So we'll start with Alex.
Oh, sure. One of the first one is that one of the big steps of it is going to be on the ballot this March. And that is one of the ending stages of our master planning and visioning process. And we've been involved in that for more than I've, longer than I've been on the board. We looked at elementary schools and now we're looking at middle and high school and what we need to do with that. And you'll see the bond for the potential new construction for the new middle school and high school. And that is one thing that the board has done a lot of work on in the past year or so. And that's one of my priorities is certainly completing that process. I'm also interested in negotiating good contracts with our teachers. Obviously affordability is an issue, excuse me, it's an issue and it should be for everybody. But you can't have affordability if you're not negotiating a decent contract with the people who work in our schools. And I'm also interested in hiring and retaining good leaders. This is something that I think we take for granted in South Burlington. We've had our superintendent, David Young, for about, oh, I don't know, eight, nine, 10 years. And it's hard to find good educational leaders. And South Burlington's been very fortunate. And I want to continue that trend. It doesn't generate controversy because we don't have problems with it, but it's not something that we can let lie and take for granted.
All right. And Bridget, the same question.
I think everyone knows what my top priority is at the moment. And it will be a priority over the next couple of years, no matter how the bond vote goes. But master planning and visioning has been something that I've worked very hard on for the last four years, starting with the elementary school process that was wrapping up as I came onto the board. And then sort of shifting focus to the middle and high schools. So that obviously if the bond goes well, then there'll be a lot of work finishing the design work for the new middle and high school and getting that process going. If it doesn't go well, we will have to regroup as a board and figure out what is next because something definitely needs to be done at the middle and high school level. Negotiations is also my number two. We have been forced in the last couple of cycles based on direction from Montpelier to have very short contracts. So first we were sort of forced into a two-year contract and then into a one-year contract. And now we're sort of at the table thinking about potentially longer contracts. So these will be contracts that affect our budgets for a few years. So I think it's important to really focus on that. And then my third is a little bit tough because it's sort of a tie between proficiency-based graduation requirements and ends metrics. We've done a whole lot of work as a district on PBGRs. And I think there's a lot of questions about them. I think the work has been really great work. And I think there's a little bit of closing a gap between perception and what's happening in the schools. And also really listening carefully to what parents are saying and to what other folks are saying about how they're feeling students are being prepared for their next steps. So I think there's a little bit of work to be done there. And then ends metrics has been an issue for a while. Ends are what we hope for for our students when they graduate from South Burlington. And we've been doing a lot of work over on that for the last few years. We still have some more work to do to really determine how well our students are doing on those ends that we set out for them. And if they're not doing what we're hoping, then where do we need to reallocate resources or where do we need to focus in the future?
Sure. Yeah. And so you both brought up the school districts bond article proposal, which is for a $209.6 million joint middle and high school and athletic complex. And so I wanted to ask each of you, you know, why you believe in that proposal and why you think voters should support it this town meeting day. So we'll start with you, Bridget.
Sure. I really support the bond. Obviously, I've worked very hard on doing the research. I really came into that process thinking, hoping that it was just a matter of doing some renovations and extending the lives of those buildings. As we got deeper into the research, it really became clear to me that that will not solve our capacity issues. It will not prepare us for the next several decades to provide education. It won't give us the flexibility we need to adapt to any future changes and how we're educating kids. And it won't make the buildings energy efficient and environmentally sound. And for a lot of reasons, we will end up as a community, I believe, if we go the renovation route, paying more in the long run. It won't feel that way at the beginning, but I feel that based on the things that we might run into during that process and based on the additional changes that we'll need to make down the road when construction costs are higher, that we will in the end end up paying more than the $209.6 million. So I feel like this is the most holistic plan to really prepare South Burlington to deliver education for the next 60 to 70 years at the middle and high school level.
Sure. All right. And Alex, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are very similar to what Bridget has said. So I'm going to expand on it. And my process, when I got into the thing, process of it, was why can't we renovate it? And we came up with an idea that we may be able to renovate the buildings for $55 million, but in the end, we would have the same buildings. They would still be under capacity. We'd still be overcrowded in the high school and we would still have the same limitations. So at that point, you think, well, what should we build? What should we add on to it? And it kept on going and going to the point where we realized that the most efficient way to spend the money that we're asking to spend is the bond that we have proposed right now. You know, we could have gone with the $55 million bond, but at the end of the $55 million, you would have the same buildings and really very little would be new. You'd have a little bit new system, some, you know, buildings, you know, different rooms would be, would not have temperature problems, but there really wouldn't be a whole lot difference. So it would be almost like throwing $55 million at nothing. And a lot of the other iterations that we went through were similar. You know, we would get something, but we wouldn't feel like we got enough. And we'd still be spending a lot of money, but we wouldn't get what we thought would be the best value. And I think this bond that we have proposed now is the best value. And I think that's why the board supported it unanimously, even though all five of us came in as pretty skeptical. And it was a long process. And I hope the voters can go through that process and reach their own conclusions as well.
Right, definitely. And so, you know, South Burlington is in a unique situation as far as our state goes where we do have increasing enrollment.
That's true.
And I was wondering, you know, a lot of that's in the elementary schools. And I was wondering what that looks like at this time and what you think the needs will be at the elementaries in the coming years, so.
So, do you want to go first out since I went first on the last one? Sorry.
Sure. Actually, this fall, we have had to deal with several questions of what we're going to do with elementary school, which is very close to capacity. And, you know, I wonder in the back of my head, are we going to have to come with a bond to add more space at the elementary level? Are we going to have to move fifth grade to Tuttle or fifth grade to the new school? I don't know. These are not things that we've talked about, but I wonder about that. Right now, high school, the high school is well over capacity. And so it's a more urgent situation. But having had kids in elementary school when there was overcrowding and we, the board at that time added a new teacher and actually was fortunate to have the extra classroom, I know that that overcrowding at the elementary school is also a problem as well. And with new developing, in particular, the new apartment building on Market Street where we have 20 new students just this past year have moved into there and joined the South Burlington school system, welcomed by the way. But that does create us, create a situation that we have to deal with and we have to find space for these kids.
Right, right. And so I wondered, can you answer what you would do then? Because you were saying you're not sure, but.
Well, I don't know because we haven't really decided what to do. And we decide as a board, but we'll certainly have all the options out there and we'll discuss them before we move ahead with another ask for the city, if we get to that point.
Right. All right.
Yeah, I think some of the things have been discussed. They haven't really been moved forward as a board. So there is some extra capacity at Chamberlain. There is still a little bit of capacity at Rick Marcutt. So the question becomes, what do we do with new developments and where do we point those developments? And to make sure that we're not completely overcrowding Orchard, which is right now the most overcrowded of our elementary schools. David Young has been trying to reopen the conversation about impact fees for new developments. So at one point in South Burlington, there were impact fees that went along with new developments to pay for things like, you know, adding on to a school if we got to the point where we were low on capacity. So that's another idea that's been raised but hasn't gone too far yet. But, you know, those are questions that are kind of stirring amongst the board and in discussions with city. And then as Alex said, you know, we've talked about a lot of things over the years, but we're not at a point where we feel that we're at a critical stage with any of the schools yet. We are very tight at Orchard. We believe that Orchard will not be as tight next year. We're sending a lot of fifth graders to the middle school from there. But we are sort of monitoring that at the elementary schools and trying to come up with creative solutions to that. I don't foresee us adding a big bond anytime in the future for that, anytime in the near future, I should say. But rather trying to find other creative ways of making sure that we have enough space for those kids. We do see an increase next year, though, of 6.1% at the high school level. And part of that is that we are going to be graduating the biggest eighth grade class that we've ever graduated into the high school. And so middle school enrollment will go down a little bit next year, but that's combining with elementary enrollment that's going up 5.2%. So we're seeing big kindergarten classes. We're seeing, as Alex pointed out, kids moving in from affordable housing and trying to really be in South Burlington because that's where parents want to be for the school system. So we are trying to think holistically about it, but clearly the needs right now are highest at the middle and high school levels.
Sure. And has there been any talk of redistricting? And if there has, is that something you would support? And we can start with Alex.
Sure. And when you say redistricting, that means different neighborhoods going to different parts of the, different elementary schools. It's something that I'm open to talking about, but it's not something that we've brought up as a board. So if we get to a point where we have to either redistrict or build or do something else, I'm open to anything. And I've tried to find the most painless situation and hopefully make everybody happy.
I don't think there's any city or school where it makes everybody happy. I've decided that is not really something one can do. But the last redistricting we had was over 20 years ago at this point. And it caused a lot of challenges within the community. I think what I was describing with regard to pointing new developments at different schools potentially is sort of a form of soft redistricting over time. And it's possible that at some point we'll have to discuss a firmer sort of redistricting. We have not gotten to that stage yet, we don't think. Partly, we have been waiting to have any of those kind of conversations until we figure out what we're doing with Chamberlain in terms of noise and in terms of sound levels. We wanted to make sure that we weren't starting those conversations when we weren't sure that that school was a healthy place to be. We do think it will be a healthy, it is a healthy place to be now. And it is due for some sound mitigation work that we're sort of working through the funding with the FAA on that, that sound mitigation work that will make that an even better place to be in school. Although our Chamberlain families love Chamberlain and are very happy with that school. And so there is a little bit of capacity there. And in some ways, Chamberlain would benefit from a bigger student population. Once a school is sort of below a certain scale, it makes it challenging to staff all the things that you need to staff. You end up with a lot of partial full-time equivalent people because of the size of the school and for budget reasons and all of that. So in some ways, Chamberlain would be a better place for everybody if there were more students there. But we have not, as a board, had a real, serious conversation about bringing up redistricting within the next year or two or anything like that.
Sure. And you bring up the F-35s and noise at Chamberlain School. So I wanted to ask each of you, you know, should you secure federal funds to help with noise mitigation? I know there's a local match on that. And have you considered how we would meet the local match?
I would, I'm not the expert in the details of this. Gary Marcus, our director of operations, and David Young have been working very closely with the airport and with other different groups on securing those funds. So my understanding is that there is potentially an FAA grant out there. There's even been a potentially a provider identified to do the work that would need to be done to put in a positive ventilation system and an air conditioning system at Chamberlain as soon as we're ready to do that work. The issue is this match, which it's been a little bit unclear to us exactly what that match is going to be because they haven't really revealed to us what the final price would be on the work. We understand that it's supposed to be a 10% match. David and Gary have been working creatively with different folks like Vermont Gas and some other different entities that provide different kinds of grants and trying to understand whether, if some of those grants were to come through, whether those would potentially satisfy the match. So there are a lot of folks working on it in the background, but I don't have an exact answer to you about the exact timing of when that, those funds would be released and how we'll make that match happen.
Sure. And Alex, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I think we, we're keeping it on our front burner and we're watching it as closely as we can. We are doing things to Chamberlain School in order to make it more compatible with a noisy environment. I don't know if that's going to be enough. Certainly the F-35s are here, but they haven't seemed to ramped up their operations in full capacity yet. And I understand that they're training down in Florida right now. But, and obviously, when they're out, when the kids are outside of the building, there's nothing that the building can do to protect them from that noise. And that's a problem as well. So we're, we talk about it at every board meeting. Our superintendent brings it up and we're still working on it.
Sure. All right. And so this class, the class of 2020, is going to graduate with proficiency-based graduation requirements. So I'm wondering if you could each kind of give me a status update on how that's going and where you see it going for students. So if you want to start, yeah.
Yeah, sure, I'll go. Proficiency, I'm in favor of proficiency, I'm just going to say PBGRs because it's easier. The thing to note about the PBGRs is it does not get rid of letter grades. We still have letter grades and your transcript is going to look very similar to what it has always looked. So I'm in favor of it. There are a lot of things that the students learn through them and that may otherwise go through the cracks, but, but it's not a radical change. It's more of an, I would consider it more of an add-on rather than a change or an overhaul of our grading system.
Sure. So PBGRs, as I think a lot of people know, are really a state mandated issue. So the state kind of handed down this mandate a few years ago without telling districts how they should implement it. So there's been a lot of professional development time spent at all levels really of the district trying to determine, you know, what the right proficiencies are to look at and how to, how to allow students to demonstrate that they're proficient and how many tries they get to demonstrate that they're proficient, those kinds of things. So I just want to, I just want to tweak a little bit what Alex said. We have definitely, Pat Burke has been very clear that he will maintain grades at the high school level. That is something that has been a very clear message, both from families, but a lot of the teachers as well at the high school, that they're comfortable maintaining those sort of parallel systems. And that way PBGRs become more of an enhancement at the high school than they do a complete takeover of our old system. At the middle school, they are a little further down the path of PBGRs. And some teachers are not giving letter grades, is my understanding, at the middle school. And they are a little bit further down the path in that work. And so I think the work has been very thoughtful and very well organized and very well led. I get good feedback from some families. I get questions from other families. It's something that's been on our future agenda items, which is sort of the items that we want to see brought up at a board meeting at some point. And a few of us sort of pushed that forward a little bit last meeting to say we really need, we had planned it out for July to sort of get a report on how the first class that was graduating with PBGRs, which would be this class of 2020, how they did and what our lessons were from that. And we asked if we could sort of move that forward a little bit, just because it's a question that a lot of folks in the community are asking. And we wanted to see if we could kind of get that on the agenda a little bit earlier. So hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll have a chance for the community to come and ask us questions and just to hear a little bit more from the folks who've been leading that charge at the middle and high school.
Sure. And then I was looking to get both of your takes on Vermont's approach to funding education and what you would ask of our legislators. So I guess whoever would like to start.
I'll go, sure, sure. Yeah, we have a, we have a system where I like to boil it down to each town pays for the amount of money that they spend per kid. So in theory, if you're, you're spending, say, an example of X amount per kid in one town, your tax rate should be the same in another town if they're spending the same amount per kid. And it's, it was started about 20, over 20 years ago in what was then called Act 60. And it's been tweaked a little bit here and there. And I think right now it's the, it's the best system that you can come up with, but I think more people might like to refer to it as the least bad system that you can come up with. But one thing in particular that I would like to see reintroduced or brought back is aid for school construction. It used to be that schools would get 30% grant from the state for the cost of building a new school. That was ended about 10 years ago. And right now, there is what has been estimated is about $1 billion statewide of deferred maintenance because towns cannot afford to go it alone on the things that their buildings need. And some of the needs that I've read about are much worse than what South Burlington has.
Yeah, I would agree with the school construction funding. And in fact, Martin LaLone and some others had a bill last year, and I believe that they're reintroducing it. They're working on it this year again to focus on school construction aid, not just for deferred maintenance, but Act 46 has created a lot of issues with districts merging together and different grade levels trying to come together in the same building. And even more challenging than what we're facing in South Burlington, there are a lot of situations where enrollment is actually declining, but yet the buildings are sort of falling apart. And so there are some challenges there. And so obviously, I would fully support a statewide look at that to understand how we're going to look at that as a state, to make sure that we have facilities to continue to attract families to the state and to continue to retain families in Vermont. On school construct, or school funding in general, though, one thing I would really like to see the state do is take a step back and see if there is a way that we can give school districts more visibility on some of the state factors that are coming in. So a little bit more in terms of forecasting or in terms of sort of managing the state ed fund in a different way so that we have more visibility a year or two out in our budgets. Because the challenge we have now is often the state factors, CLA, yield, equalized pupil numbers, don't come in until January, when we have literally until mid-January to approve a budget that's going to voters. And then often yield, which is one of the key ingredients in determining what our home state property tax rate is, isn't fully finalized until the legislature ends, sometimes as late as May or even June one year when I've been on the board. And that makes it really tricky because you're sort of putting an estimated number in front of voters and they're having to approve it and hope that the legislature moves in the right direction. And that's really, really hard for creating budgets. I would also love to see, and I don't have a perfect way of doing it, if there's a simplified way of doing income sensitivity. I think income sensitivity is a great program and it is really meant to kind of spread the burden a little bit more fairly across different towns and make sure that all towns have the funding that they need to support their students. But it is so confusing to navigate, as you know, from having to write articles on it, especially in relation to our bond. And it's just really tricky for people to understand what their tax bill potentially is when they go to the voting booth because it's very hard to calculate.
Absolutely. Sure. And then looking to ask each of you about the social issues that our students are facing most immediately. I know that in our state and around the nation, we've been hearing about the vaping epidemic. And I'm wondering if that's something that's been touching South Burlington and how we should work on that and other issues.
Yeah. I would love to let Alex go first on that one because that is one of his favorite topics.
I'm not going to stand up and start shouting, but I have been a very strong proponent of anti-tobacco legislation. And I'm thankful that a year ago, South Burlington passed a non-binding referendum that showed a four, or three to one or four to one support for raising the age of buying nicotine delivery devices to 21. And that has happened. Right now, there is in the legislature, a proposed ban on flavors for nicotine delivery devices. And when you look at things such as a company called Candy King selling bubble gum flavored vapes, blue raspberry lemonade, you know that's targeted at kids. It's not targeted at grownups. And that's what the tobacco industry and the vape industry is trying to do, is they're trying to get kids addicted to nicotine before they even know that they're addicted. And banning the flavors would be a great next step. And certainly, we do have a problem in South Burlington. And Pat Burke, our high school principal, has said so in not very nice terms. And it's a problem. And it hurts kids down the road when they're applying for jobs. So you could say it hurts our outcome. So it's very much a school board issue. It's our business.
I would say, I agree that vaping is an issue for sure in our schools. We have a couple of tools we know that we use to determine what issues kids are facing. And one of them is the Vermont Youth Risk Survey, where kids sort of self-report anonymously, you know, the challenges that they're facing. The other thing that I've been impressed with as I've been on the school board is how well spoken and how well organized our own students are. And they come to us, especially at the high school level, to tell us, you know, these are the challenges that we're facing, both within our schools, but, you know, in a broader sense. And they really make us aware of those issues. And I think that we've done our best as a board over the last several years to try to support students when they come to us and say that they have an issue. We've done our very best as adults to kind of support them and figuring out solutions to those issues. It's a little more challenging at the elementary level. And we've done a lot of work over the last few years and that work will continue to address issues like adverse childhood experiences and and really implementing trauma-informed practices in our elementary schools in particular to make sure that we're addressing some of these issues that we may not even have visibility of directly, but we're seeing the behaviors that are coming out of some of those social issues that kids are facing. And we've definitely seen an increase in that in our district. We understand that it's been that way across Vermont, even to a greater extent, but we've definitely noticed an uptick in those changes in behaviors. We hear it from staff, especially, and how they're dealing with kids every day. And we're working really hard as a district to do professional development, to bring in the right resources to try to address some of those issues and be as supportive as we can for kids, because our schools are really a safe haven for a lot of kids when there are trouble, you know, there's trouble in the rest of their life. Sometimes coming to school is a happy place, and we want to make it a happy place and a place where there are caring adults who can kind of look out for them.
Sure, absolutely. And so as a last question, I wanted to ask each of you about the proposed FY21 budget. So it is an 11.2% tax rate increase. You each voted in support of it, so I was hoping you could take a minute to say why you support it.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Do you mind if I go first?
Go ahead.
Okay. The 11.2% increase is a challenge this year, and I completely understand, it's a challenge in any year. It's particularly a challenge when we're also looking to try to pass a bond that is very necessary. This is one of the struggles that comes from the state giving us numbers so late when we're creating a budget, and one of the things that the state changed this year is our common level of appraisal. So every year, the state determines how well houses are selling versus what their appraised value is, and they've decided that in South Burlington, we're very out of whack. And so instead of selling just a little bit above where they're appraised, they changed our CLA from 93% to 89%. So basically, we're only assessed at 89% of what their true value is. So that change in and of itself added 4% to the tax increase without us doing any changes to the expense budget. And then the rest of those expenses, that 8% increase in expenses are challenging for a number of reasons, but they're things that are very necessary. So $500,000 of that is maintenance to the elementary schools that really can't be put off. It's things like roofs and things that had been put off for, not really put off, but had been on the schedule, and they really need to be done before they create bigger issues. And a lot of it has to do with increasing enrollment. So it's making sure that we have staff to meet the increasing enrollment that we're seeing at all levels. And then a lot of it has to do with healthcare, because when you're in a people business like a school, healthcare is a concern across all facets. The statewide healthcare award that came out of those negotiations has really made us budget for about a 17.8% increase in healthcare costs.
And we are running tight. So I'm sorry to.
I will.
All right. Just pick up where Bridgette set off. Right now, we have a statewide teachers' contract, so healthcare is a little bit out of control, out of the South Burlington District's control and every district in the state, because it's done at the state level. So like she, like you said, we have that 17% increase in that, and that is hurting every school district. We also have increasing enrollment, which you don't hear about much in Vermont, because I don't know of any other district that is increasing, and if they are, they're not increasing as fast as we are. So it makes sense that if you're going to have increasing enrollment, you're going to have an increasing budget. You can't, you can't have it the opposite way. That would be.
Really, the only way to do that would be to be cutting programming.
You would have to cut a lot of programming.
And that's one of the challenges, and we have, we have been very reticent to cut back on programming, and we've heard from people, you should be cutting back programming. We're not really prepared to do that at this stage, because we believe we've, we've been very thoughtful about what curriculum and what programs we offer our students, and without cutting programming, these are sort of the realities of the budget this year, unfortunately.
All right.